Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the October 16th, 2014 Wakegan City Council meeting. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Conkin.
President.
Alderman Moiseo.
President.
Alderman Beadley.
President.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Valco.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Please stand for indication. Bishop Coburn, please.
Thank you. Father, we thank you again for another City Council meeting. We thank you for our mayor, and thank you for Alderman, and thank you for our city. We pray for blessings upon our city. Thank you for the privilege once again as your blessing upon us. In the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
Blessed be this to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, Bishop Coburn's wife is in the hospital. Please say a prayer for her when you have an opportunity. He's been a mainstay with us, and I really, I'm really sorry that she's ill, Bishop.
Thank you so much.
Mayor's comments tonight. I want to make a special presentation in acknowledgement of two of our businesses in Wakegan. Shrink Smoking Gun has been a business within our community for the past 50 years. Ms. Shrink, would you please stand up? Ms. Shrink, would you, would you please come forward, please, to the front? And anyone else in the family who'd like to come forward?
You want to know who taught her to drive?
Well, tell me, you can guess.
You can.
Yes, she waved at me. I told you.
Through the turmoil and tears, the trials and tribulations, this business has stood strong in Wakegan for 50 years. So I think there are another round of applause.
Well, I'd just like to say thank you to Wakegan, also, for their help and big influence on us. And, you know, I wish my husband were here to receive this instead of me, but we'll keep on going.
The second business I'd like to acknowledge has, has been in the city for the past 30 years. It's Taqueria Guerrero. Anyone hear from Taco, from the Taqueria Guerrero? Come forward, please.
Steve Martin and I went there last week.
Yes, we did.
Had lunch there.
Delicious.
I'm gonna tell ya, if you haven't been there, please go. It was excellent. The hospitality was tremendous. It's a great place. You have to stop it, stop there, and after you have a very good lunch or dinner. So, make a couple comments.
Just thank you to the city of Wakegan for always supporting our local community and us in distance, and we hope for another 30 years more, or at least to reach that, please.
Great ceviche. Tonight, we have, I brought forth to the staff and the City Council members, three photographs of our new city sticker, which was taken by one of our aspiring, and actually, she's not aspiring, she's a very good artist, a very good photographer. Tracy Adams, please stand, Tracy. So Tracy took the photographs. I want you to know, the one who got, the one that won Tracy was the one with the boats in the harbor. It wrote, it got all but two votes. So that's your best work. So thank you so much. They were all great, but that's the one they liked the most. So thank you very much. The last time I'd like to discuss is the, every year, Wakegan has a Christmas Cantata, and it's an event down at the Genesee Theater where they sing songs of the Christmas holidays. We have several representatives here from the Christmas Cantata. Ladies, would you please come forward and address the mic? This event, by, by the way, will take place in Wakegan at the Genesee Theater on the 16th of this month, and the tickets are free. It's a free concert, and it is, it's wonderful. If you go and on the internet and look it up, you'll see it's, it draws rave reviews wherever it, wherever it's held. Lady, please.
Hello, my name is Jiyoung Moon. I'm from the International Youth Fellowship. It's a nonprofit youth organization. And the IOIF is presenting the 2014 Grotas Christmas Cantata US Tour, and they travel around 20 different cities in the US. And Grotas Christmas Cantata will be held at the Genesee Theater in Wakegan, October 16th, at, it's, it's gonna be in 7:00 PM. And the Grotas Choir there, Choir was founded in South Korea, and they won international choral competition in Italy this year, and first prize in Choral Festival in Switzerland. And they're true, the reason why they're having Christmas Cantata is because they want to deliver true hope and joy to the audience, and also their main point is to deliver the true meaning of the Christmas. And also in addition, IOIF is hosting, like, we have a lot of annual events such as like English Camp in Mexico. We go to Haiti every summer. So if any youth movement might be interested about, you know, to join our, you know, organization would be really great. And also I hope, I ask for all of your help, and we need to promote and spread the word to many young people in Wakegan as well. So also, once again, the Grotas Christmas Cantata, it's gonna be in Genesee Theater, 16th, on October, 7:00 PM. So, you know, feel free to invite any friends, family, or it could be any organization. So, you know, I'll be putting, I put the tickets in the back table, and also if you want tickets, you can come by, stop by Mayor's office or at the Wakegan Public Library. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Those of you who think that Wakegan's not changing drastically, it is. You can now pay your food and beverage taxes online at www.wakeganil.gov. In order to service you better, we are introducing a new e-file option for food and beverage tax. Now you'll be able to file your tax return and pay online anywhere, anytime, with a click of a button. This will help us minimize compliance errors, faster payments, avoiding late fees, and saves time. So I encourage all of you that if you need to pay your food and beverage taxes 24 hours a day online, please go to that address. And many thanks to Tina Smigelski and George Torres, because they are the ones who got this working, got it online. So both of you, thank you very much. Audience time. Is there anyone, no one from audience, no one from audience time? Okay. Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman May, to approve the minutes of September 15th, 2014, and the special council minutes of September 22nd, 2014. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Resolutions, proclamations, presentation appointments, resolution, resolution to commemorate the 50th anniversary of the Edwin Montano Memorial Scholarship Fund. Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution?
Resolution 14R97. Whereas the Puerto Rican Society of Wakegan was founded in 1957 as an organization for the betterment of its members. As a result of this effort, the Puerto Rican Society was involved in helping solve issues related to education, housing, and employment. And whereas Edwin Montano was a prominent leader of this organization and one of its founding members, he was a visionary leader who saw a need in the community and make every effort to find a solution. He was persistent, courageous, and resourceful. And whereas the Puerto Rican Society saw the need to help young people fulfill their dreams of acquiring in a college education. And whereas the Puerto Rican Society and the Edwin Montano Scholarship Funded, over the last 50 years have raised over $1 million in scholarships, who have awarded to 1,500 students from the community. Now therefore be resolved that the city of Wakegan recognize the tremendous work done by the Edwin Montano Memorial Scholarship Fund in providing scholarships for young college students, and salutes its leadership and members on the sixth day of October 2014. That our suitable copy of this resolution be signed by the mayor, the city clerk, be presented to the Puerto Rican Society.
Motion to accept this resolution, motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Tempest. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Montana, and Ms. Montana, support.
Mayor, before you present the award, may I say a few words?
Yes, please.
Because son Vic wrestled for me. Edwin Montano was a real strong leader, a moving force for the Puerto Rican club, which used to be Wakegan Recreation Board there on Sheraton Road, and through his, through his efforts, when the Puerto Rican community first established many, many, many years ago, many worked in the area, and Edwin was the one that they came to for help. And he helped so, so many in the community. And then I, I had a personal experience, because I had Vic, I had a little insight. I had a Japanese wrestling team coming, and I went to Vic Montana, and I said, Vic, I gotta find a place for him to stay. So Vic, really, with some other community leaders, helped me get rooms for all these Japanese wrestlers to stay overnight as they came back to wrestle in our, in our community. So again, Vic, not Vic, Edwin, really stepped forward to help me as a coach and helped our wrestling program. And Mrs. Montana, I've known the family for many, many years, and I appreciate what you're doing for them today, Mayor.
Yeah, I think, Mayor, if I could say something as well. I'd like to see Wanda Valentin be up here with the photo. She's also the chairperson for the Edwin Montano Scholarship Program, and also our president, Alma Huertas, who's the president of the Puerto Rican Society. These people, you know, put in a lot of hours, you know, and, and great effort to see some of these events come to fruition, and they definitely need to be recognized. Myself, my personal experience with Mr. Montano, I learned a lot from him. One of the things that was very important was, that he showed me was, number one, obey the law. That is one thing that, when, when we were going up here in the city of Wakegan, that he was for sure on you. If you messed around or did something wrong, believe me, you're out of this community.
Yep.
So that's the type of man this was. So he knew that it was important, in order to serve his community, was to build relationships with City Hall, with government, with the Police Department, with the Housing Authority. So this man definitely knew, you know, what it took to, to help bring a community together. And at that time, the Puerto Rican community was a fairly large community here in this, this community. As we all know, this was once an industrial city. And why were they here? They were here for jobs. And Mr. Montano helped us get jobs, helped, helped us find housing, and he was just a tremendous asset to the community and to humanity. So thank you very much.
I had the privilege of meeting Mr. Montano, you know, as a young police officer, and I spent many evenings at the Puerto Rican Society. It was like my second home. I had the privilege of going to Puerto Rico and playing softball with the Puerto Rican Society several times. He was a great man. This is a great event. It helps our children get a college education. Those of you who know me, especially Mr. Martin, our corporate city council, know I am money, I'm very tight with money. I donated $500 to this organization, simply because we've done it for the past 30 years of my tenure on this, in the city administration. A very well-warranted investment. The Michigan County, the Puerto Rican Society have been a mainstay in the city of Wakegan. They have been the strength in part of our communities and many, many others. It's been my honor purely to be part of the organization. So from the area of Wakegan to the center.
I'd like to say thank you for the, for the very generous comments. I know that my father would be thrilled. Thank you very much.
Mayor, open that.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I don't.
Alderman Cunningham.
I don't know, but if, I know their schedule is very tight on the day of the Edwin Montano banquet. But I think it would be fitting if you can represent that resolution, so the rest of the community within the Puerto Rican Society can see exactly how we appreciate what the Puerto Rican Society and that entire building and history mean to this community. I don't know if you can fit that in, but Mayor, I would, I know I would be there.
Yeah. Alderman, we have him on the agenda to represent the resolution.
Thank you.
But thank you very much for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Judiciary Committee, Alderman Rivera, please.
Judiciary Committee came to order at approximately 5:01 this evening, and on the agenda, item A, approve ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Wakegan regarding medical cannabis facilities. The reason why we did this, as you remember, I think way back a few months ago, we had a moratorium on, on the medical marijuana in the facilities, and the, and we, we meant, we actually extended the moratorium twice. So, and the reason why we did this was to give the, our staff enough time to see what the Springfield, the state of Illinois, was coming up with their language in the state in regards to medical facilities and medical dispensaries. And, and the reason why we did it is because obviously, we need to have our zoning conditions in place. And I must commend Ann Lynn and the staff. They did a wonderful job putting together this ordinance, adding some language to the ordinance, as far as, well, the original text was first written with, excuse me, was first written with, you know, not the original text, excuse me. We added some language to it, as well as, you know, the language of the state ordinance. And what we needed to do was add language to the, as far as the, the parking, as far as the, the, there were some questions that Alderman Valco brought up that was, that was very, you know, very good in terms of, you know, the underage. He brought up some, a good point in regards to the medical, what is it, confidentiality, as far as that is concerned. I mean, who determines what a responsible 18-year-old is? You know, who determines that? So that's something that our court, excuse me, Ann Lynn will be looking at it as well. We added our security languages to the dispensaries. We added language in regards to appearance. These buildings need to be exposed in terms of the public. They can't be hidden. The parking lot has to be exposed as well. Sinage depicting marijuana plants, that's not allowed. Anything to do with any sign like that is not allowed. We also amended the language in regards to, like I had mentioned before, of 18 must be accompanied by a responsible person. And I know Alderman Valco brought up a good point. Parking visibility, that was added to the language. And I know some of the questions in regards, well, can you tax this? Well, medical marijuana is considered a prescription drug. So you really can't, you know, tax a prescription in the state of Illinois. So that was brought up. So Ann Lynn did a wonderful job in, in terms of putting this ordinance together, and like I said, we needed to have this in place because the, the state is allowing, I believe, 22 in the state of Illinois, and two of them here in Lake County. So, a good job, Ann, and I appreciate that very much. Thank you. And I so move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Your Honor.
Alderman Cunningham.
Yeah, Your Honor, I think there's a lot of questions, and, and not a whole lot of answers to this medical marijuana. I am going to ask that we hold this over, and I would get with the chairman, so I can better understand. Because what I don't need is young men and young ladies going to some doctor, get some prescription and some type of, yeah, I'm sick, then next thing you know, they're smoking weed throughout our community. You know, this is a very sensitive subject. We all know what the intent is, but there's a, there's a lot of intent on everything. Who's gonna be coming in here? Who's gonna be opening it up? And I, I just like for us to really find out this tax thing. How is it marijuana, you know, I guess these are our state legislators, I'm assuming. Our state legislator's gonna tell us that this can't be taxed. There's just too, too many things going on with, with this. And the next thing you're gonna have is a bunch of folks coming up here wanna get a license, just like they did with these gaming things.
There's only, there's only one, one license.
Right.
It, it, it may not be in Wakegan.
It may not be. But I personally would like to discourage it from even being near us. Anytime you're talking about liquor, marijuana, drugs, they always find it in the low-income areas or Wakegan. Somehow it always makes its way back here. Let's put it someplace, if it's that good, and it means that much for people, let's put it, put it by the hospitals. Put it by Condel. Put it by Lake Forest. Put it by Highland Park. But I guarantee it'll find its way back here. And then the problems associated with, with finding its way back here. The next thing you know, papers will be everywhere. It, Wakegan has marijuana this. Wakegan has drugs that. Anything negative finds its way back to us for some reason. So let's slow it down a little bit. I'm gonna hold the matter over. That's my personal opinion.
Alderman, before, before I accept that, let me, let me make something very clear to you. Coming from a law enforcement community, every question you've asked or want to be answered, we've been through already with Corporation Council, with Ann Lynn. All those concerns have been addressed. We cannot deny a license to a business if it is granted a license to be, we cannot deny it. So Ann, would you please explain to the Alderman how this actually works?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd be happy to. This is an industry that is almost completely regulated by the state. The only area in which the city can regulate at all is zoning. And if we don't pass this ordinance, then there's a potential for one of these facilities to come in anywhere in the city of Wakegan. The ordinance that's before you tonight really is an effort to control the location of where one of these either dispensaries, which are like pharmacies for medical cannabis only, or cultivation center, which is like a big industrial greenhouse, again, for medical cannabis, would be able to locate in Wakegan. And the proposed ordinance restricts the location of these, were licensed to be issued by the state, not by the city, only to the RLI district in the case of cultivation centers, which is basically, that's research, light, industrial, basically out on Wakegan Road area. Those areas, we have a few other small RLI locations, but mostly there. And that's for cultivation centers, and it would be a conditional use. So if a cultivation center were to, the proprietors were to find a property, it would have to be in that area only, and then they would have to apply for a conditional use permit, and then go through our process, as well as the state licensing. If we don't have an ordinance putting in restrictions, they could get their state licensing based on potentially any location in Wakegan that fits within the state law. For cultivation centers, they're not allowed to be located within 2,500 feet of schools or daycare centers, or areas zoned exclusively for residential use. So that by itself limits them quite a lot. But again, this is an effort on the part of the city to add what restrictions we are allowed to add. With the, for dispensaries, again, these pharmacies, the ordinance that's proposed would make dispensaries a conditional use, again, only in RLI, in OI-1 and OI-2. Again, these are limited areas in the city of Wakegan. And, and the proposal is to make them a permitted use, just as you suggest, Alderman Cunningham. In the OI-2, if they're accessory to a hospital. So that, again, very restricted, very limited. We're trying to do the things that we are allowed to do under the state law. If we don't impose these types of restrictions, then we're basically leaving it up to the state of Illinois to decide where they might be able to be located. I would also add another caveat under the state law, two things. One, dispensaries under the state law cannot locate within 1,000 feet of schools, daycare centers. They can't be within a residence, and they can't be within a, a district zoned exclusively for residential use. But they could be located one foot outside a district zoned exclusively for residential use, a dispensary. Now, another restriction that is imposed by the state is the fact that cultivation permits, and all the applications are in now at the state level, the state agencies are vetting those and deciding who might receive the licenses. The, there will only be 22 cultivation centers in Illinois, one for each state police, police district. We're in State Police District 2. It's very large. It includes DuPage County, Lake, McHenry, Kane, very, very large. And because of the 2,500-foot restriction from residential areas, my guess is that cult, the single cultivation center in State Police District 2 will probably locate in a more rural county, like possibly Kane County. But I don't know, and, you know, who knows what's gonna happen there. We have, if this ordinance were to pass, we would have a very limited area in Wakegan that could fit. Dispensaries, Lake County, under the state law, will be entitled to three dispensaries only. So again, that's all the municipalities in Lake County. I know that there are a number of applications at the state level for dispensaries in Lake County. Again, it's up to the state, but if we pass an ordinance, at least we will, you will be using your ability under the state law to impose some restrictions to do exactly what your concern is, which is protect our neighborhoods, by making these conditional uses. So they have to go through the conditional use process, Plan Commission, Judiciary Committee, City Council, and conditions will be imposed on them with regard to the appearance of the building, security, surveillance, parking, the age limitations on the, the customers coming into the facility, all those things. the customers coming into the facility, all those things. That's why it's really critically important to move forward with the ordinance. The other piece of this is on Thursday night at the Planning and Zoning Commission, on their agenda is our first application for a dispensary as a conditional use. So, um, the, as a part of the state law, we, as a municipality, cannot prohibit medical marijuana dispensaries if they're licensed by the state. We can't do that. The only thing we can do is, um, put on restrictions through zoning. And that's the reason that the city staff is coming to you and the Planning and Zoning Commission has moved it forward to you to, um, put on these kinds of restrictions so you have control over it. I really, really would recommend that you do not hold this over, that you move forward with this ordinance so that we do have the ability to put the conditions on and restrict these uses a- as to their location and conditions.
Right, and I, and I, and again, and I'm sorry that it has come in, uh, these questions, at least my concerns are gonna be brought up here tonight and, uh, but, uh, when you say, uh, dispensary, help me, a li- a better detail, what does that mean by? That means like a retail, that's gonna be like a retail shop versus your, was it cultivations?
No. There are two, two types of facilities. Dispensaries are, yes, retail pharmacies, but only for medical cannabis. The only people who will even go to those locations will be people with a prescription for medical cannabis. And the prescriptions, the doctors, everything is completely regulated at the state level. Um, so it's very restricted and limited as to who will even enter that. It's not like going to Walgreens or something. They can only sell medical cannabis products.
Okay.
At the dispensary. Cultivation center is, as I said, like a big industrial greenhouse.
Production plant.
It's a greenhouse, yes.
It's a green, alright, so we, and I, I'm trying to get this to make sure I understand it, then I'm able to, um, pass the information on. So the big grain house, and I'mma call it a production plant, is what it really is.
Yes.
Versus your retail store, dispense- see, that's where I, 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 I'm, I'm very challenged in now. With these zoning restrictions, in your mind right now, Ann, you've been, you just, you know the city backwards and forwards. If you had right now to pick, what is the ideal location for this, um, factory or cultivation center? What could be a ideal location certainly in the city of Waukegan?
There's only one.
I understand, I'm trying to get Ann, I don't know, you do.
The state's a turn.
No, it doesn't.
Well, I will say this, a- as a part of this whole process and the entire staff really has looked at this a long time, that's why, as Alderman Rivera said, we did have to comment and ask for, you know, extension of the moratorium, so we would have time to really study. And as a part of that process, we asked the engineering department to give us a map of the city.
That's what I'm talking.
With radiuses imposed on there, showing these twenty-five-hundred-foot, uh, locations across the city. That's for cultivation centers, nothing within twenty-five feet, twenty-five-hundred feet of a daycare or existing school. Or, uh, within twenty-five-hundred feet of a district zoned exclusively for residential use. So that cuts out a lot of the city of Waukegan. We have a list from DCFS of all the licensed daycare centers, we obviously know where all the schools are, and we know where all our districts are that are zoned for residential use. So we put all these radii on the, the map of the city of Waukegan and then we see what's left. And what's left really wasn't that much. So for cultivation centers, it's really just the RLI district, which is research light industrial, and that is the area primarily out on Waukegan Road, um, by, um, you know, the areas there where we have those types of uses. There, uh, may be some locations that would work there, but it's up to the, um, you know, proprietors of these, uh, businesses that are filing their license applications or they already have with the state now to, uh, find the location, determine if it fits within all the requirements, determine if they can make it work, uh, for that. Cultivation centers is not as much of an issue, I don't think, just because the state restrictions are so extreme. Twenty-five-hundred feet, it's a half a mile, it's a, it's a quite a distance. And when you place those radii on the map, you can see there's not much left in Waukegan. In other, uh, counties like Kane County, where they have a huge amount of rural area and not as much development, you would have much greater loca- areas where one of these could locate. Dispensaries, it's a, it's a much lesser restriction, a thousand feet, um, and it's, uh, just a thousand feet from day, daycare centers or schools and not within a district zone exclusively for residential use or not within a residence. If you had a residence that was in a business district, not within that. Um, so it's a, it, there's a lot of greater areas where a dispensary could locate. So that's why we wanted to, for the dispensaries, if you look at the ordinance, there's quite a long list of, uh, conditions that would be required, uh, as a part of the conditional use process so that the dispensary would have to do all these things in order to meet our requirements and it would be the control that we, as a municipality, are allowed to exercise under the state law.
Okay, uh, and, and I, and, uh, please, everyone understand, I do appreciate and I know you and our zoning department's been working extremely hard on this, this issue's come up before. Um, to include in that list, uh, is churches a part of that list as well, Ann?
No.
I know schools and, and daycares are important, but I think a lot of our church areas, particularly our bigger churches, include daycares and have children there on, on, you know, all the time. So is that part of the list? And if it's not, can we make that part of our conditions?
Uh, we cannot. We cannot, um, change the distance requirements or add to those at the state level. Churches are not specifically called out as a use, and that question came up earlier in the Judiciary Committee, so I just looked it up again on the state law in between the, the two meetings. Um, churches are not specifically called out. However, most of our churches in Waukegan are located in residential districts. That's a permitted use in a residential district and most of the churches, that's where they located back in the day because people walked to church.
Right.
So most of them are in residential districts and, uh, it's not permitted to have a dispensary in a residential district. So that's taken care of. If they have a daycare center or, or a school, preschool, something like that in the church, again, then it would not, uh, be allowed to be near that church. So churches, although they're not specifically called out in the ordinance, I think would be covered because of those two things.
Okay, well, I, I do appreciate that and, and, and with Ann detailed explanation, uh, your honor, I, I, it looks like we don't have a choice, but I am going to say this. These state legislators, once again, put mandates on the municipalities, forcing us, not asking, forcing, and that's another word for demanding us to do what they tell us to do, i- in regards to things like this. These decisions need to be put on the municipalities. We're the ones who have to suffer the burdens of all these crazy mandates. So I do appreciate what you guys are doing, but, your honor, there should be a strong message to our legislators, making sure they understand that this does not make sense. You wanna put all of those restrictions where we can't do anything. So that means those folks don't need to say, don't have to come to us for anything. Luckily, we have the Ann Linds and the rest of our staff looking and going through this, spending all of our time, when they can come here and we can do, we can set something up more practical. I'm gonna vote against it just because. Thank you. Thank you, Ann, I do appreciate you.
So Alderman, you were drawing your, your.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Alderman Conken?
I just got a question, Ann. How many, how many spots is that gonna open up in the city? Like you said, for a growth facility, it's obviously gotta be out on forty-three somewhere, that's the only available land that would meet all the requirements. How about for the dispensaries in the city? Are there that many more that open up for the, in the, inner, inside the city?
Well, there's only, three will be allowed in Lake County total. So, um, the odds are no. I mean, it's a much more open area on the map because of the, the shrunken a thousand feet opposed to twenty-five-hundred feet. So, uh, in theory, if it was an unlimited number of dispensaries, there might be a lot of locations in Waukegan where they could go. But under the state law, there's only gonna be three in Lake County. And, um, all the applications are in now, the, at the state level, the, uh, window has closed for, um, making applications. I don't, off the top of my, well, actually, they haven't released the list, so I don't know how many have applied for Lake County. Uh, I know that we have one dispensary, uh, planning and zoning agenda for Thursday night. Um, and that's a location out at North Point Boulevard. So that's in that same RLI district as a conditional use. But, um, because it's only three, um, I think it, we certainly won't have more than one or possibly two in Waukegan, and even that is unlikely, I'd say.
Thank you very much, Ann.
Uh-huh.
And, uh, Mayor, I'd like to also add, remember, we're.
Alderman Rivera?
We're, we're not voting on, on dispensaries or, or.
We're just voting on.
We just wanna place, like Ann was saying, these restrictions so we can have some sort of, you know, control. But, uh, and I think that's very important that we, you know, we set this, uh, this ordinance. But we're not voting for, for any dispensaries that, or cul- or, uh, or cultural, you know, excuse, cultivating, uh, companies, you know, right now. So, you know, that'll come later on in the future and, and again, you know, we have the power to vote yes or no for it. But for right now, we need to have this in place with these restrictions.
Okay. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Thanks a lot, Ann.
Yes, thank you.
Excuse me, Alderman Beedling?
I, I, I read an article, I, I think I would be more concerned if the state of Illinois, the state legislature allowed, uh, the purchase of medical marijuana with, uh, electronic benefit transfer card. I think, uh, the state of California allows that right now, believe it or not?
Um, the main issue and one of the reasons that we've, uh, re- added as a requirement in the conditions, uh, heavy security and surveillance, is that this is a, in Illinois and pretty much nationwide, I don't know about California, it's a cash business because it's not federally legal. So you cannot use the banking system. Uh, it's a real conundrum and, uh, the, um, federal government is going to have to address this very shortly, I would say.
One more question, if I may, your honor.
Alderman Conken?
Just one more question. Um, I realize that we gotta get this ordinance in place to give ourselves a ability to restrict, uh, where these dispensaries and growing facilities might be. My question is that if the state has already mandated that we cannot deny anybody, if somebody applies for a conditional use permit, is that just, why even bring it to the council if we can't deny it?
Oh, no. Uh, we just can't completely prohibit them. But if they apply for a conditional use permit, then our normal conditional use permit process, um, goes in, you know, goes into effect. So that has happened with this one that's coming up. And the Planning and Zoning Commission will review the application, will review all the conditions that this ordinance will impose and make sure that the applicant feels that they can meet all those conditions. Um, and I'm sure it'll be a lively discussion on Thursday night about whether or not they can meet all the conditions of this ordinance, assuming that it passes. And, um, no, we're not required to approve a dispensary. Yeah, we just can't outright prohibit them at all.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
I vote aye to these restrictions. I know it's regulated by the state and our hands are pretty much tied, but I'd rather have something in place that, uh, we can put our finger on, uh, in case something comes forth.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Uh, wait a minute, I would like to explain my vote, if I may. I concur with the Alderman of the Fifth Ward. I also would like to name of our state legislators that voted for this nonsense.
I can get it.
I think we need to wake 'em up.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Yeah.
Cunningham.
Alderman Cunningham?
No.
Alderman, proceed.
Okay, uh, next item on the agenda, approve ordinance amending, uh, section four-one-five of the Waukegan zoning ordinance regarding, uh, telecommunication, uh, facilities. And this is about the applicant requesting a CUP. Uh, they have to submit, uh, some of the language on this ordinance was changed. They have to submit a photographic study depicting, you know, elevations, uh, views and other, uh, supporting, uh, drawings. The original text was first written, you know, with montages, uh, that were produced from any elevation, where the towers could be seen, particularly from above canopy trees. The text was subsequently amended to specifically state that the views would be taken from six foot above grade. But the distances of one mile and three mile radiuses, uh, which weren't changed, made it highly unlikely that the towers would be seen from those distances. So to accommodate, uh, a more realistic view of any proposed tower, it suggested that the views be taken from one block away, four blocks away, and one mile away. And to present an all-around view of the tower from these distances as proposed. Uh, that photo simulations be taken from three, uh, different views for each of the three different distances. So again, uh, thank you, uh, uh, the planning and zoning staff for, you know, uh, changing these, uh, amendments. And I think it's, you know, for the betterment of, uh, not just for, you know, uh, for the whole city, for, for all the residents in the, uh, the city. And I so move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Vera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Yeah, I'm gonna vote aye, but Alderman, uh, m- m- Mr. Chairman, would this, would this also apply to our existing towers that are here or just those who are coming in for brand new ones?
Ann, would this be, uh, applied, um, I would say more towards the new ones that are would, you know, the applicant?
Yeah, it's not the actual towers themselves. Uh, when the applicants come in as a part of their big application that they present, they, uh, have to present what's called a photo simulation. So they take a picture of the, you know, proposed location and then they impose, uh, artificially through computer graphics, a simulation of what the tower will look like. And we've already had that requirement, but this is a change to beef it up, to make the simulation even better and more realistic and also from closer in. So that, it's a really an assist to the, um, to the staff als- but also, uh, and the council and, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission, but also the local residents, because they'll be able to really look at that and say, okay, I, it's like I'm standing on the ground and if it were there, this is what it would look like and can I live with that or not, basically? So it's just a, it strengthens our requirements with regard to photo simulation. It has nothing to do with the actual tower itself. So for going forward on applications.
That's just the applic- the, the admin process?
Yep, exactly.
They're not as insightful as those five-hundred-foot tall winters.
Well, each applicant, each application for a tower will come before you and they're, uh, decided each on a case-by-case basis.
And, and I'm assuming that's, that's the only change you're, you're doing, just that part of it, Ann?
Yes. On this particular ordinance is before you, that's what it's for.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Ann.
Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Conken?
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Velco?
Aye.
Alderman Rivera?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Yeah, aye.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Alderman Rivera. Insurance committee, Alderman Cunningham?
The insurance committee met, uh, early in item A. Approve twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen workers' compensation, casualty insurance premium as premium including or excluding self-insured retention and deductible for an amount not to exceed eight-hundred-ninety-one-thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars. And I so move.
Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Beedling. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
I, I, I think this is kinda important for the audience to hear. If our finance director could explain, like we did at the insurance committee, this, this just pays for our, our insurance policy and, uh, the deductible and everything else that goes along with, uh, our goofy, uh, you know, state of Illinois workers' compensation law.
Do you want, you want me to explain the structure?
Yeah, this is just for our insurance policy, right?
This is for, we are self-insured, um, up to a certain retention amount depending on the line of coverage. And these are the policy premiums after we, we've reached those amounts. So for our liability insurance would, which would be things like employment actions or, um, lawsuits filed for police-related issues, our self-insured retention or deductible is two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for occurrence. Um, and then on top of that, we would have these policies. The first is for fifteen million and then there's a policy on top of that for ten. We also have our workers' compensation policy, our self-insured. policy. Our self-insured retention per claim is $750,000, and that is, that is an industry standard at this point in the State of Illinois for police and fire, $700,000 for civilian employees. And then we also have our underground and above-ground tank storage. Our deductibles on that are five grand. And then we have our crime and cyber insurance as well included.
The state of Indiana is one-third of what it is in Illinois. It's our businesses and people are leaving Illinois, but our state legislature refuses to do anything about it. Thank you.
And Alderman, you are correct. Workman's comp claims in the city of Waukegan are phenomenal. If you knew how much money we pay out to people who take workman's comp claims and leave the city with injuries and get second jobs, it's phenomenal. It is an issue. The Illinois Municipal League is trying to address this problem, so it's a bone of contention. And Alderman Beedling is right. Businesses are leaving our state because our workman's compensation premiums and costs are so prohibitive. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye. Item B, authorize proper city officials to settle police department workers' compensation claim WC 2012872598 and WC 2012872309 for an amount not to exceed $178,137.50. An iso move.
This is out of pocket, right?
This is out of pocket, yes.
Yes, because it, because, and to Alderman Beedling's point, I'm sorry, to Tina's point, it has not hit that $750,000 threshold, which, aka known as a deductible.
Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Beedling. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye. Item C, authorize proper city officials to settle police department Waukegan compensation claim number WC 2012874601 for an amount not to exceed $178,137.50. An iso move.
Motion by Alderman Beedling, second, I'm sorry, motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Beedling. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
This is out of pocket as well, right?
Yes, sir. Both of these are police claims. Both the officers are now retired.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
My vote is aye. And I will say, though, Your Honor, over the last five years with Tina and her staff, we have put some measures in place to really track these and add more, I guess, oversight to some of these claims. So we've done a lot better in the last five years than we have in prior 10 years. So we are making strides to police, kind of police ourselves a little bit, and put more emphasis to our department heads and to our employees about safety on the job. Thank you. And also, we changed law firms. We have another gentleman who does that for us named Bernie Wasaki, a local Waukegan attorney. Steve Martin, our Corporation Council, sits in on these meetings, and Tina McGelzky. And they have, in fact, done a wonderful job saving the money, saving the city substantial dollars in working through a lot of these claims. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Yeah, we did that.
Done? Okay. The next is the Labor Relations Committee. We met today at 6:30. And there was one item on the agenda, and that item was to approve a side letter agreement extending the collective bargaining agreement made between the International Union of Operating Engineers, Local 150, representing the Public Employees Division, public work supervisors, from its original termination date of April 30, 2017, to the new termination date of April 30, 2020. What this does is extends their contract another two years. The last two years of the contract are wage reopeners. It gives us a longer period of time to have these employees under contract. It's certainly to our benefit. Myself, Tina McGelzky, the finance director, Steve Martin, our attorney, and our HR director, Tamika Jones, have looked at this. I presented it to the Labor Relations Committee. None of us had issue with it. That being said, motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye. Thank you. Next is the Public Safety Committee. Alderman Conken.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Public Safety Committee met tonight at 6:00 PM. We had several items on the agenda. Item A is to award a bid for station number one, Fire Department Station Number One roof replacement, Phase One, to the lowest qualified bidder, which was Waukegan Roofing Company at 1320 Gladstone Ave., Waukegan, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed $73,700. Funding for this project will come from the Building and Grounds Maintenance Fund, line item 100302024410. An iso move.
Motion by Alderman Conken, second by Alderman Beedling. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Item C, the Public Safety Committee recommends draft an ordinance to reflect the handicap parking only on Ninth Street, 70 feet east of Commonwealth Avenue, for the address at 841 Commonwealth Avenue. An iso move.
Motion by Alderman Conken, second by Alderman Beedling. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Item D, the Public Safety Committee recommends draft an ordinance to reflect handicap parking only on Hyde Park Avenue, 79 feet west of West Morland Avenue, for the address known as 422 West Morland. An iso move.
Motion by Alderman Conken, second by Alderman Beedling. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Item E, to draft an ordinance to reflect resident-permit parking on Butrick Street on the east side from the South Curve Line on Gulf Road to 1,308 feet south thereof. An iso move.
Motion by Alderman Conken, second by Alderman Beedling. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Item F, to waive the bid procedure and purchase two 2014 Ford Police Interceptor SUVs under the State of Illinois Joint Purchasing Contract Number 4017160 from Morrow Brothers Ford at a cost of $29,129 each, and it's a total cost of $58,258. Funds for this purchase will be taken from the Federal Asset Forfeiture Fund, line item number 296629626493. An iso move.
Motion by Alderman Conken, second by Alderman Beedling. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Item G, to waive the bid procedure and purchase one 2014 Ford Police Interceptor SUV with, under the State of Illinois Joint Purchasing Contract Number 4017160 from Morrow Brothers Ford for a cost of $29,129. Funds for this purchase will be taken from the Justice Assistance Grant. So this is from a different fund. Line item number 240624024489. An iso move.
Motion by Alderman Conken, second by Alderman Beedling. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Your Honor, we had a couple of information-only items. We discussed the new fire and police radio system that we will be taking next with the Special Finance Committee meeting. We also received a check from the Illinois State Police, forfeiture check in the amount of $12,690.61 from the Illinois State Police Department, and the chief has told me it has been deposited. One other item that I want to mention to everybody is, so they get an idea of what's going on with our fire department, what kind of men we have on duty. On June 28th of this year, a car got wrapped around a telephone pole. There were live wires from ComEd floating around. And I want to be known that our battalion chiefs, our trucks and our rescue vehicles all participated in rescuing and extricating the victim from her car. They all did an outstanding job. The police secured landing zones for the helicopters so that the Flight for Life could come in. So I just want to recognize the Battalion Chief Roberts, Lieutenant Pfaff, Lieutenant Zalins, Lieutenant Camarato, and firefighters Johnson, Vanderbrook, Shin, Brandl, Norton, McCarthy, Zon, Paisert, Kenke, and Pellegrino. So I think they've all done a fine job, and ladies and gentlemen, you should be happy you have these guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Conken. Next is the Special Finance Committee. Alderman Velco.
Thank you, Your Honor. This evening, the Finance Committee met and affirmed the emergency 911 board waiver of the bid process due to State of Illinois joint purchasing agreement status and approval of the award of a purchase contract, and further authorizing the proper city officials to enter into a lease agreement with Motorola Services Incorporated relative to a new emergency radio system in an amount not to exceed $2,619,650.48. This will come out of Budget Code 23232326494. An iso move, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Next item is under old business, Item A, motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsom, to adopt a resolution deeming certain funds in the Lakehurst TIFT, Tax Increment Financing District Number Five, surplus in directing the distribution therefore effective December 31, 2014. This item was held over by Alderman Beedling. Alderman Beedling and I discussed this issue. Alderman Beedling, do you have issue with this?
No, sir.
Okay. That being said, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Next item is new business recommendation action by Corporation Council, Item A, approval payroll dated September 19, 2014, in the amount of $1,399,460.6. Bonus checks in the amount of $396.36, and a final payout in the amount of $2,000, I'm sorry, $2,378.25, and payroll dated October 3, 2014, in the amount of $1,370,14.90, and a bonus checks in the amount of $7,080.46. Uniform allowance in the amount of $44,150. Final payout in the amount of $40,028.27, and a final payout in the amount of $26,114.45. Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Item B, approval of bills dated October 6, 2014, in the amount of $2,015,750.66. Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman, I'm sorry, motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Your Honor, I have a couple of items there I'd like to...
Please, please proceed, Alderman.
Number 454117 and number 454152, I'd like to pull those out of the bill run. I think those need to come out of an expense account.
Okay. What are they for, sir?
Ones for a notary and ones for business cards.
For business cards, for who?
Madam Director, who are the business cards for?
They were charged to the mayor's office, so the mayor's debt.
I don't know. I think those are business expense account charges. My opinion.
And, is that the notary for me, Alderman?
Well, I think that's a personal choice. I mean, notary, that's fine, but I think you pay for that yourself.
Okay. Alderman, I want to express my concern...
You're on a point of order here, please. I mean, it's getting a little ridiculous here. We all got business cards two and three years ago. If you don't want them, Harold, you can pay for them yourself.
I do pay for them myself.
Who's, who's the business card broker? For the mayor's office or for the Alderman?
I...
You don't know? Okay.
...are charged to the mayor's office.
This isn't ridiculous.
It is, sir.
We have expense accounts. That's what they're for. Let's use them that way. I could bring up another item now. I'm going to discuss that in private.
I, you know, I really, I really think...
Expense account. That's where the, you're supposed to be paying for these items.
I really think these items should be discussed amongst us and them, and not to be aired here.
All I wanted to do was pull the bills out. I wasn't going to ruin on anyone.
Well, let's, Your Honor, if you can, let's just pull them out, and we'll talk about them, and come back and do it later.
Okay. Let's do, let's do this. Let's make this simple. First of all, I want all of you Aldermen to understand this. I am not a thief, and I am not a liar. Everything I do, I charge. I put on my charge card, and then turn, give that to Tina. Tina takes it out of the proper budget item from my office. I, no Alderman before me, from my office, has challenged the mayor integrity or honesty like you have to me, Alderman Beedling. I find that offensive. I find if you have a personal issue with me, you need to be a man and come to my office and talk to me. Every Alderman on this council has come to my office with issue. Tommy Conken and I argue about issues constantly. We don't bring this to the floor. You could have brought this to my attention in my office. I find it very...
It started with the car, and your comment to the newspaper that we approved the car.
Okay. Alderman, Alderman, let's stop this real quick.
Any comment about your integrity or your honesty.
Okay. Let's stop this right now.
You're just mistaken about your expense account.
Make a motion, make a motion, a motion by Alderman Beedling to hold out those two items from the bill run. Is there a second? Is there a second to that motion? If not, it fails. Motion, let's, on the original, on the original motion, Maria, please.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
No.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Item C, grant authority to the proper city officials to extend a professional service agreement by and between the City of Waukegan and the Emerging Energies Corporation to December 31, 2015, for the purpose of economic development advisory services in the amount not to exceed $60,000. Budget code 108068224436. What this is, is we currently have John Anterian, who is a former mayor of the city of Kenosha, who redeveloped their lakefront. John Anterian has been instrumental in getting us grants from IDNR and other agencies, state agencies. He has far surpassed the $60,000 we paid him last year for his services. He is, right now, we're getting a grant for $150,000 that John was responsible for. He has more than paid for his services, and I highly recommend that we give this man an opportunity to come back to our city and provide essential services to our community. He's working, but his contract expires the 31st of December. That being said, motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Conken.
I'm sorry, Fat Cat. Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Moiseo. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Item E. Approved trick-or-treat hours on Sunday, October 26, 2014 in the...from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM. Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman May. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item F. Rescind contract awards on September 15, 2014, council meeting to the Intra-Pacific Incorporated to install security cameras in the garage at 225 North County for an amount not to exceed $26,453.72. Budget item code 595-459527495.
494.
494. And said contract must be awarded pursuant to the bidding process. What occurred here was we accepted a...we thought it was the only sole provider of these cameras. It was determined it's not. Therefore, by statute, we cannot accept a bid that was not bid. So we're going to have to rescind that and rebid this project. Motion by Alderman Beedling, second by Alderman May. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye. Ordinance and resolution, ordinance adopting ordinance rescinding section 21121 of the City of Waukegan Code of Ordinances, Chapter 20, restricting parking any time except Sundays on public holidays as to applies to County Street West Side from a point 158 feet south of southwest corner of the intersection of Grand Avenue and County Street to a point 200 feet south of the intersection. What this does, it allows the church at the corner to have two parking spaces. Motion by Alderman Beedling, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye. Alderman's time, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Conken.
Thank you. Couple of items. First off, the fire department, I announced last meeting that they were going to have an open house. Unfortunately, it had to be canceled and it has been rescheduled for this coming Sunday, the 12th, from 1:00 to 4:00 PM at Fire Station Number One. And that's Belvedere and Jackson Street and they will have all of their teams out there to explain the fire department and what they do and have a display with all the equipment. Second thing I'd like to talk about, obviously, everybody knows what's going on here, teacher's strike. That's nothing that this council has anything to do with. I'm sure that if you want to get information, go see the teachers, go see the school board and let them...you can make up your minds what's going on out there. But the thing that does concern this council is the fact that with the kids not in school, please be aware that you...although you would normally not see kids outside this time of year during the day, you might see them, so please be careful. And with that, I'll also lead into the Halloween hours, too. Please be careful on Halloween, the hours that we've just approved. Make sure that you keep an eye out so that no kids get hurt on the 26th from 1:00 to 4:00. Thank you very much.
Alderman Moiseo.
Along those lines of the teacher's strike, I am a teacher involved in the strike. I'd like to thank the mayor, and this comes from all the teachers that I've talked to, thank the mayor and Senator Link for their support in this issue. I think mostly to try to help the teachers and also to move these negotiations along. You can't get into all the intricacies of a strike in the time that I have, a three or four-page newspaper article or a press release. There's just too many things involved in that to try to do it justice. I think that's been trying to...it's trying to be done to try to get people on the side. If you want to know all the intricacies and some of the facts, you need to seek out probably a teacher because most of us know most of the facts involved in the reason why it happened. But you can't always go by what's put on the internet or what's put in a press release. Some of that, I think, sometimes is spun. Again, if you want to get the true facts, you need to seek out a teacher. One thing will happen, if this continues to go on, the wounds will be deeper and be more hurtful. That's just what happens in strikes. So we need to urge...there is a school board meeting tomorrow. We need to urge that this comes to an end. This is not good for anybody, we all know that. Also, relationships will be strained to a further point than they've already been strained already. But we need to urge this to come to an end as quickly as possible with under the right conditions. I'm not going to say any more about it because like I said, Doug would not do it justice for me to go on and on about it. But if you'd like to know the facts, we all probably know a teacher. You need to seek them out and ask them the facts so they can try to help you out to determine why it happened. Thank you.
Alderman Beedling.
I have four schools in the fourth ward. We have four, four schools in the fourth ward. I had some good conversations with some of the younger teachers and the issue I tried to address with them was their pension fund. Their pension fund is bankrupt. It's insolvent, much like the police and fire. Every police and fire pension fund in this state, state employee retirement system, state university retirement system, look it up. These are all insolvent pension funds. What do they all have in common? They all offer 3% compounded cost of living increases to their retirees. That's where a lot of the money's going out the door. I feel sorry for the young teachers, police, firefighters because there's not going to be anything left for them. That's reality. I'm going to, I'm going to venture that when they...whoever set this up, and I'm sure it was some union leaders along with misguided state legislators, they didn't talk to an actuary and ask them, "How do we set up a sustainable defined benefit pension plan?" Pay raises? No, most of the money in this state is shoveling out the door to make up for all these cost of living allowances. The last four years of a teacher's career, they get a 6% pay hike. 6% for the last four years. That does their pension fund a lot of good. This contract in the newspaper, 9%, 7%, 7%. So maybe I'm wrong, but to me, if you're within seven years of retirement, you're looking at perhaps a 50% bump in pay. How is that going to help the pension fund? They need to eliminate cost of living allowance. I'm in the carpenter's union. We don't have a cost of living allowance. And the only solid pension fund in the state of Illinois, the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, doesn't give out cost of living allowances. 3% compounded cost of living allowance doubles in 23 years. 23 years. Our police department pension one retiree per employee right now. One retiree per employee. Yet they still persist with the 3% cost of living allowance. You can never get caught up. Another objection I had was that they invited students in some of these picket lines, giving them their signs to wear. That's immoral. I...involving children in the, in the strike? They don't know anything about any of this. They like their teachers, yeah. They don't understand what the issues are. I'm sure they didn't go home and tell their...explain to the parents that how much it's going to cost them out of pocket with the new contract. I expect people to act like with dignity on a, on a picket line. Walk up and down the sidewalk with your signs. Don't cheer on the people that are annoying the rest of this community, honking your car horns all day long because I'm sick and tired of getting the calls. All this horn honking. "Yee-hee-hee-hee-hee." That's what the crowd does. It's like the Oprah Winfrey Show or The View or something when somebody makes a comment that everybody likes. You know, let's act like adults here and with dignity. Regarding the two bills, I wasn't going to mention anything. I just wanted the two damn bills, pull them out of the bill run and it come out of an expense account. Them wasn't trying to embarrass anyone. You brought that on yourself, just like with the car. Furthermore, there's another matter of $9,886.73 that we charge on a charge card. That's why we get expense accounts. You get $1,500 a month, I get $250. That box of cards sitting there, I didn't buy it out of my expense account. It'll sit there until the day I leave here. I'm not going to use them. I use what the people give me only. And I think we need to understand that up here. This is government. We serve the people. They give us expense accounts. Not charge cards to charge things out of the central services fund. How cheap are we? In my opinion, that's disgraceful. And I don't even want to argue about it anymore, but the goddamn credit cards need to be turned in. And you know what? No more of that business comes out of the expense account because I'm embarrassed by it all, quite frankly. Thank you very much.
Alderman Newsom.
Excuse me, one second. Tina, do I turn in every one of those charges to you? Are they coded correctly to you? Is there any collusion on my part trying to hide what I'm doing on behalf of the City of Waukegan? And if there were, would you file a charge against me? Would you? Okay. Enough said, thank you. I think the Bill Morrison would. Okay, go ahead.
Alderman Newsom. Alderman Tempest. Alderman May.
Her dad would. Thank you. I just want to make an announcement on October 25th. Quiet down there. On October 25th, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, there's going to be an event downtown called The Street Store. Seventh Ward resident has taken it upon herself and has got a group of volunteers together. What they're doing is they're collecting donations. And The Street Store, what The Street Store is, is a one-day pop-up clothing store for Lake County's homeless population. So all the prices at The Street Store is, are free. So at the Waukegan Field House, at Hinkston Park, they're taking donations until October 22nd. What they're looking for are clothing, shoes, outerwear, and backpacks, you know, for our homeless. The winter's coming up, we're supposed to have another cold winter. This is a way you can give back to the homeless in our community. They'll be collecting until October 22nd. There's a donation bin right inside the field house. They empty it out every day. And then on October 25th, this event will be taking place downtown. So if you can spread the word through your churches, your schools, throughout the community, if you know someone in need, they can come...well, the location is yet to be determined, David. Do we have a location, do you know? Okay, yeah, so we will make an announcement on the location as soon as we have it. But I did want to give a shout out to Courtney and DJ Urban from the Seventh Ward who have taken on this initiative. Secondly, I would just like to say a big thank you to Waukegan Main Street. We will be recognizing all the volunteer groups who helped us with the beach this summer at the next council meeting in October. But last weekend, Main Street went out and besides cleaning the beach, they also rounded up volunteers and cleaned up the banks of the Amstutz Highway. Some of you might have seen them when you were coming in and out of town. So thank you, Main Street, you guys are awesome. And that's all I have, thank you.
Alderman Valco.
Mrs. Shrank, or Ma Shrank, as I call her, and it's not because she's a lot older than me, it's because we're almost the same age, but because her kids work in the store also. From South Genesee Street to Washington and Elmwood to your present location at 2000 Washington, thank you for all the years of service. I know I go in there quite a bit. You've always got the smile on your face as well as your children. Thank you very much, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Rivera.
Just to remind everyone, this Saturday at the Puerto Rican Society, the Enwood Montana Scholarship Dinner and Dance starts at...with cocktails at 6:00 PM and dinner at 7:00 PM. And there'll be the...also the presentation of the scholarships to the young women of this community who aspire to go to college. So it'll be a wonderful event and we really appreciate the entire community who have supported this program for the past 50 years. So we appreciate that very much. And as far as the school, I'll make a comment. I think it's very important that, you know, I just hope that they get back to the bargaining table. And the only ones here that are losing are the children. So we need to get them back into school and hopefully both sides can reach an agreement so we can move on. Thank you.
Alderman Cunningham.
I, too, also want to echo what Alderman Rivera has said. It is a great honor for me to, as a young man growing up in Waukegan and spending so much of my young days at that Puerto Rican society and really didn't know Mr. Montana as most of you do. We just knew he was the guy you didn't mess with. But what was, what's an honor for me is that I'm able to vote on 50 years of service that his vision and everyone a part of that, I want to call it the Puerto Rican Society, and that's the only way I know it is to be said, for what they have done for the young minds in this community is unspeakable. They have given opportunity and support to young men and young women, all races, for the last 50 years. I don't know anyone who deserves more of an honor than to educate the young minds of this community. I jokingly was looking at Mrs. Montana and the young lady has not aged because of who she is and what her and her husband started so many years ago. But as a little fellow back then, now, as an adult and a parent today, I am proud to be one of the persons to be able to vote on your 50 years of service. So thank you very much. And I know if Alderman Evans was here, who used to take everybody over there all the time, over there all the time, he would be saying the same thing. So we really, I do appreciate that. And thank you for allowing me to, to, to be a part of that. And second, I am going to talk about this teacher's strike. This teacher's strike at this day and time, particularly in the city of Waukegan, as a little boy growing up in, in Waukegan Public Schools, from Carmen to Thomas Jefferson to Waukegan East, now it's, it's all into one, I don't remember board members. I can't even tell you who my board members was or how long they were there. Don't remember them at all, because they were not on the front lines. You know who's on the front lines? Our frontline educators. Everyone in this room who went to Waukegan, I bet you you can remember your principal and your teachers all the way through. And for the money, believe me, if these teachers did this for the money, a lot of them probably wouldn't be doing it. It is not the money that they care about. It is improving the quality of life for these young men and young ladies. We here all the time, at least I do. Waukegan Public Schools, those kids don't match up to the kids out throughout the county. I'm here to tell you a wrong. You know why? It's because every morning, our frontline heroes get up and leave their families, and they come in and they get our young men, our young ladies ready. They get them ready when they don't have food at home. They get them ready when they have social problems going on in their neighborhoods. They get them ready. Over the last 10 to 15 years, our frontline educators has having to deal with so many different things, it's taken away from them really doing what their core job is, that's to educate our young men and our young ladies. So I'm going to ride ride with them to the day I die. And I'm expecting for us to ride ride, because that's who we need in these classrooms. Because if you don't have them, them judges, our police officers, these prisons, they're going to be built, they're going to build more and more of them for them. And I guarantee you, Waukegan will be the first place they go on to start. So this is an SOS out to our school board members. First of all, you need to have someone who can negotiate, and who can negotiate, and don't have to come back to the board and come back to the table. That's the first thing. That's negotiation 101. If you didn't know, if you don't know it, we got some people in the city of Waukegan, particularly in City Hall, who can help you out with that. Second, stop telling everybody that these teachers want to take all the money and just leave here. I can count right now Alderman Moiseo, Alderman Tempest, former mayor and Alderman Big High, I can count the money that came out of their pockets to help these kids. Mark Arrington, Marv Arrington paid me and four other young boys to go to Norfolk State University to visit. It didn't come out of their pension, it came out of their pockets. Get our teachers back in the classrooms. If you want to play hardball, play hardball with some of them administrators over there. Lincoln Center, they've doubled in the population than what it used to be. Let's talk about it, everybody. You want to beat up on these teachers, beat up on some of them administrators. Look at the salaries you're giving some, you got nine, four or five different levels of administrators over there. Get our teachers back in the classroom. We can't afford for our young men and young ladies to spend another day outside of these classrooms. And as, as all the men and the leaders in this community, and those who sit on the other side who's negotiating, they're tough. They're extremely tough. The mayor said it himself, we're not raising the property, the property tax rate no more. We simply cannot have these teachers outside the classroom. Board members, leaders make decisions that other people don't want to make. That's why you're a leader. Alderman Moiseo said it the best. This is going to be some, you're going to cut people so deep that they're not going to want to help do anything, and the person who's going to lose out on all of this are our babies. Please, board members, make the decision. Get them back in the class, and I promise you, you will find some people who are willing to do whatever it takes to make sure our young men and our young ladies get a quality education. Thank you.
Well, as a mayor of this community, I will tell you this. I strongly support the teachers of this community. They are strong in character, they're tenacious. Every Wednesday, I take my daughter, who's a kindergarten teacher at John Clark School, I take her to the Salvation Army, and I buy her school supplies for her class, because the school district can't afford to do that. So every Wednesday, they stock papers, pens, scissors, whatever's necessary for kindergarten class, and every Wednesday we go buy it. We buy everything they have in the store. My daughter has a master's degree in education. She makes $41,000 a year. A month ago, I hired a janitor for the city of Waukegan. Starting pay on the job, $43,000. What is the problem, ladies and gentlemen? The problem is the teachers are not appreciated. Larry Tempest, when he was in high school, I respected him because of his character and commitment to the high school. He was a wonderful teacher. He paid the price. Luckily for him, he retired. Greg Moiseo, hardworking, dedicated, committed teacher on the picket line. I was there today with, with Ald, with Senator Link. I was very proud to stand with the teachers. The teachers deserve a wage that they can live on. My daughter comes home every night and works at home till 8 o'clock on projects for her children. She works every weekend. She goes in early every day. And she is not unique. Every teacher I know does the same thing. They are committed to their children. They deserve a wage that makes them able to afford to do things and not spend their money on their children. And every teacher without exception, and Alderman Tempest and Alderman Moiseo, if I'm wrong, please correct me. Every teacher without exception does exactly what my daughter does. And they are heroes. They are my heroes. And if anyone deserves to be compensated for their work, it is our Waukegan teachers. What the, what the board did to the teachers yesterday or last Friday was despicable. What they did is they cut off all their insurance benefits. These teachers, some of them are in chemotherapy, some are undergoing operations, some of them are currently in the hospital. They took away all their insurance benefits. They're without insurance. Imagine what would happen if one of those teachers became ill or had an emergency situation from last Friday forward. This strike does not benefit anyone except the teachers coming behind them. They need to get to the table. They need to address issues of importance. The 977 increases that they're asking for are only starting points with bargaining. I've been a union negotiator for 12 years in the police department. The ploy is to always start high and meet somewhere in the middle. It's a common practice. They're asking for and what they get are two separate things. But ladies and gentlemen, please, the teachers, if they want to hoop and holler, God bless them. Let them hoop and holler. They're out there all day doing what they knew, know they have to do in order to make this work. So, let it be known to everyone who happens to watch this in the audience before me, I have nothing but compassion, pride, and respect for our Waukegan teachers, and I will support them until the very last day of this strike, when that pen is signed, that signature is signed on this contract. It will resolve hopefully quickly, but until that dime, mark me down with the Waukegan teachers. So thank you.
So move.
Audience time. Chris, 1420 Melrose Avenue?
Good evening, Alderman and Mayor. As you said, my name is Chris Kostecy. I live at 1420 Melrose Avenue. I'd like to have a proposition to amend, amend the ordinance to allow backyard chickens to join other municipalities like Village Deerfield, Village of Grayslake, and unincorporated Lake County. There are many benefits to having small flocks of these birds in private backyards. Some of these are fresh daily eggs. Pesticide-free pest control, I know that's been an issue, that's come up before. Free organic fertilizer for gardens. And they're easy to care for pets, and they're helping residential homes to be a little more sustainable. While these eggs might be available at supermarkets, the treatment of these animals is very unfair and unkind. So we'd like to take the money out of those pockets of these companies. Plus, these eggs will be more nutritious for these families that are hurting. These chickens are omnivorous. They will forage for insects, weeds, and other vermin that might be in the area. And the care for these chickens are inexpensive. There are factors that, you know, there are some downsides, that if we do plan this properly, would not be an issue. Some people are worried about smells, noise, and destruction of property. With proper care of these animals, there will be no smell, very little no smell. And if there isn't proper care, you will have that smell. So that's one thing we need to keep in mind. Noise, chickens actually have a very, are very quiet. They're about 20 to 40 decibels, which is a normal speaking conversation. Roosters are the ones that make noise, so that's something that we should ban in the city. And they, they are quieter than dogs. I know there have been, there are a lot of dogs that are pretty noisy, and they're a lot quieter than a lot of people in the city with their music. And also, these chickens are quiet in the evening. They premature roosts from dusk till dawn, so they're not going to be waking up people in the middle of the night. And other thing is the destruction of property. One thing we would want is, you know, keeping the chickens restricted to a fenced-in area or a chicken coop, just so that they're not in, running out of the neighborhood and destroying other people's properties. Birds are much safer and less of a nuisance, like I said, as a dog. And cities within our country have approved these ordinances, and could be easily applied within the city as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chris. Jane Ferry, 531 Leith Avenue?
I'm Jane Ferry, 531 Leith Avenue, and Executive Director of Waukegan Main Street. Thank you, Alderman May, for pointing out that we were part of the coalition to help keep the beach clean this summer. And we just got approval from IDOT to clean the Amstutz. We feel that that's our front yard, so we're trying to take care of it. We appreciate the, the shout out. I'm handing out a couple of things to the Alderman and Mayor. It is something that's starting this weekend is impenetrable at the Clockwise Theater. It starts on Friday. It's their new show and their new season, so please go out and support them. Also, I did include one of the flyers from The Street Store, so that you have that information in front of you. Alderman May pointed it out earlier, so I will not go over it. But I do want to say, the hours at the fieldhouse are Monday through Friday, 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So there certainly is a time that all of us can get out there and make some donations. And lastly, I'd like to say that there is going to be a ribbon cutting this Friday at Jimmy's Corner, which is at 10 North Sheridan. We are going to celebrate the fact that we finally have a coffee shop in downtown Waukegan again, so please come out and support Jimmy's and be part of the ribbon cutting. If, it is at 11:00 a.m., sorry. 10 North Sheridan at 11:00 a.m. on this Friday. If you'd like more information about the latest and greatest things that are going on in Waukegan, please go to our website, which is www.waukegammainstreet.org/calender. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Jane. Ms. Ortiz?
Thank you so much, Mayor. I'll make this very brief, because it's past my bedtime. On Saturday, September 28th, over 100 Waukegan residents joined the Clean Power Lake County Campaign for a Beach Sweep and Hands Across the Sand solidarity event in our municipal beach in Waukegan. I'd like to thank all of our partners, volunteers, including Most Blessed Trinity and Christ Episcopal Church, as well as those that traveled from Will County, Peoria, and Little Village in Chicago that are facing the same challenge in their communities as well. We had a very strong Latino turnout, as well as the community leaders. I'd like to thank Alderman Sam Cunningham for coming to our event, who actually live next to the coal fire power plant. And we stood together to demand a healthier, clean energy economies for our community. We are not asking for a planned closure for tomorrow, but we are asking for a long-term plan and transition strategy that no corporation on the lakefront has given our community. Yes, it's about public and environmental health for our community, but it also, it's also about proactive economic development strategies for Waukegan. It's a tough political issue, but recognize that community members in Waukegan are invested in a new future. And the Clean Power Lake County Campaign did collect over 3,000 petitions, which is the same amount of voters that elected our mayor. And this issue requires courage, so we can build the Waukegan we all believe in, a healthier community for our children, and a revitalized lakefront. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ortiz. Moiseo adjourned by Alderman Moiseo. Second by Alderman Vera. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.